It's four o'clock. Welcome, welcome. We will call this committee of the whole to order. And first up for discussion items, because there are no minutes to be approved, we will jump to update on the Murray Theater with Kim Sorenson, and he has 20 minutes. Hi, Kim.
Good day. Okay, well, I think 20 minutes is going to be plenty. Lori Edmonds is also joining me, so that if you have the difficult questions, Lori can answer those. She's behind the pillar. So we just thought it would be a good idea to bring you up to date on where we're at with the Murray Theater. And if you have questions, please stop me and let's talk about them as we go. I've written down some notes to try and get some of your minds thinking and answer the questions that your constituents might be asking you. So you may remember that back in 2018, we started to renovate the theater. At that time, we put together a conceptual design and a cost estimate. The cost estimate came in about seven and a half to eight million dollars. We then, well, let me back up a little bit. So here we are three years later. We have not hired a firm to do another cost estimate just because we're to the point where we're nowhere moving forward with the theater. But we estimate that the theater cost is going to be right around $10 million. And as we put together a plan for the theater, we'll keep you apprised of that. But so funding for the theater. So Salt Lake County, back in 2018, gave us a little over $3.6 million in TRCC money. TRCC is Tourism Recreation Culture and Convention. Because of COVID, the money was pulled back and the project was stopped. However, Mayor Camp received word a few months ago that they had reinstated that money. So there's a little over $3.6 million from TRCC, from the county. That is one point, about 1.879 million that's available this budget year, and then the remaining 1.757 approximately available in 2022. And it's on a reimbursement. So we've got to spend the money and then we'll go back to the county and ask for reimbursement. We also, Murray also put in the last two years in CIP money, a million dollars a year. We've spent some of that money in our initial phases of putting together a plan for the building, but that was a total of $2 million. So right now, we're sitting at about $5.6 million for the theater project. That puts us a $4.5 million gap between the $10 million and what we have. Questions with that?
We're doing fundraising though, right?
So we are, we are doing fundraising, and let me get to that then. So we, back in 2018, we contracted with Pathway and Associates to do a fundraising campaign for the theater. We had, we had started that process. We were about two months, maybe a month into that process. And then, of course, the money was pulled from the county. So we terminated the contract with Pathways. We've just recently rebid the fundraising and we've selected Pathways again. So we've contracted with Pathways. They are currently putting together a fundraising campaign for the theater. And let me tell you where we're at with that. So there's, there's quite a few naming opportunities for the theater, including the theater lobby, the auditorium, the north lounge, the ticket office, the stage, the green room. And then we're also putting together a package that'll include selling seats. People will be able to put their names on the back of a seat. And this is, this is for the community members. So if community members have an opportunity to get involved and become engaged with the project. And it also, we won't, we won't receive a lot of funding from selling seats, but we believe that we will get community buy-in, that there will be people that want to do that. The other, the other option that we've, we've talked with our mayor's office about, we've talked with the Arts Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and that is naming rights for the theater. So that, that will be included in the campaign, but it's going to, it's going to specifically spell out that it may be negotiated. And the reason for that is as we, as we met with Mayor Camp, with Mayor Hales and the two boards, everybody was online that the Murray Theater is the Murray Theater.
Right.
That we really didn't want to name it the Turner Theater or the Cotter Theater or something like that. However, however, our Pathways Associates have said, yeah, but we may have that, we may have that issue come up, and there may be somebody come to the table with some substantial funds. And, and usually when a person comes to the table and wants something like that, they really don't want it to be called the Sorenson Theater. They want it, they want their names on tickets. They may want their names on the, on the door. They may want to have Murray Theater sponsored by. So, so we've left that open and we'll see if somebody comes to the table and has multimillion dollars and wants to do that. I think we'll come back and have a further discussion on that. So that's, that's the fundraising campaign. We're nearly complete with the brochure that'll go out. We've, we've met with Pathways two years ago. And again, recently, we have a list of possible donors that they will be approaching. The brochure, like I say, will come out within the next couple of weeks, maybe month. As soon as that's available, I will make sure that all of the council members have that.
When you say brochure, is it going to go out to the citizens? Or, oh, that way they can hear you online.
Oh, sorry. When you say brochure, is that just for us or is it for the community? Or how?
Good question. No, the brochure will be specifically for those in our community that have the million dollars to donate to the, to the theater or to promote to the theater. We will also have other information that'll go out to the citizens, for example, about the chairs and the different opportunities for them as well.
Sounds good. I'm wondering, how much is Pathways charging us?
So good question. Pathways, the agreement with Pathways is $5,000 a month for one year, so $60,000. And, or they will get 10% of whatever they fundraise, whatever the maximum is. Back in 2018, when we first met with them, they were cautiously optimistic, I would say. This time around, they seem a little more optimistic that there, that there is funding out there and there is interest in, in the Murray Theater. I'll also tell you that last week, the mayor's office with Rosalba met at the state legislature with Senator Davis. And there seems to be some interest in maybe getting some money from the legislature through the state just in the next couple of months. We'll know that. So definitely, the theater is on a lot of people's minds and the support is, we have a lot of support from citizens and, and the public.
That's awesome. Has Pathways committed to any number that they're able to fundraise or?
No, it's, of course, they, they can't commit to anything. They, they just, you never know.
Right.
I will tell you that Pathways is a, is a very successful fundraising firm. And certainly, their credibility and their reputation depends on what they do as they move forward. So we're comfortable with Pathways. We think that we've got the right firm. And although I couldn't say what we're anticipating to generate, I'm comfortable to tell you that we'll get, we'll get something. They'll, they'll pay more than we're paying their fees.
Do you know if you're going to use the same contractor? About four years ago, when I was on the council, we were invited to go over to the theater and see what kind of plans they had and the material they were going to use for the curtain and how the floor was going to look like. Is, are you going to be using that same contractor or are you going to rebid that out?
So that's a great, we have to rebid it out.
Okay.
Originally, we, we had hired a contractor, a CMGC, Construction Manager General Contractor. And, and the reason for that is we didn't want to design a theater. And then typically, you design a building, then you put it out to bid and you get whatever bid you get. Well, we didn't want to design a theater and put it out to bid and have it come in $15 million. So we hired a CMGC to help us through the process. We've spent four months back in 2018 doing that, tearing some walls down, removing some ceilings, potholing, potholing the concrete and doing some structural. Right now, and I'll get to that, we've hired CRSA, who's the architect. Right now, they are of the opinion that we can finish the plan and then bid the project like you, like you would most plans, that they've got enough information to know that the costs and that we're not going to go over. So we don't know the contractor yet. It'll, it will have to go out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I just mentioned CRSAs.
Can I mention something? I just wanted to mention that Dale Cox is the one that set this meeting up. And so he's the one, the connection that we had with Gene, and that was huge. So Dale set the whole thing up. And I think when the first commitment, commitment was about 500,000, he got Gene up to 2 million. So he's pretty persuasive.
Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting and without, without Gene actually committing, it seemed like there was, there was close to a committal of some, some substantial money. So. So we had hired CRSA back in 2018 to design, design the building. CRSA spent about four to five months with us designing, designing the building before COVID hit. And then, of course, we canceled the, the agreement with CRSA. So what that meant is we needed to go out and rebid for architectural services again. Because they had, they had already spent four to five months, they had a heads up on most other contractors. And there, we selected them again because of their knowledge of the project, because of their, their fees or costs to design the project. So, so we've contracted with CRSA to design the renovation of the theater again. Now, that means a couple of things. They've already, they've already put together four to five months of work. Because of that, they anticipate being ready, ready to bid the project either late, late spring, early summer coming up. Once the project is, is bid, construction is estimated to take about eight months. Now, this is best case scenario. And we all know that building has not been best case scenario over the last couple of years. But it is possible that we would be opening the theater in the spring of 2023. Now, what does that, what does that mean? That means that we're just, we'll be coming up to fiscal year '23 budget process here in a couple of months. Lori and I are working right now on, on a budget for the theater, staffing budget, O and M budget. And we will present that to you at budget time in the, in the early spring. That'll be for about six months of operation, assuming best case scenario. If, if best case scenario doesn't happen and the building takes longer, which quite honestly, I believe it will, but we need to be prepared if, if it doesn't. So we'll, we'll ask for monies to run the, or operate the theater about six months. And then we'll just watch and see. And, and as we get close to having the theater ready, then we'll, we'll come back to the mayor and ask to hire an operations manager probably three or four months before, before we're ready to open, open the building. And then, of course, we'll hire other, other staff. I can't give you any, any indication today on, on how much it's going to cost to operate the, the theater. We, we are very early in looking at that. In fact, tomorrow, Lori and I are going to Logan to look. They've got three theaters in Logan that are similar to what, what we'll have. One smaller theater that more resembles what we'll have. And at that time, we're going to get their budgets and see how they, they manage and operate the theater. So, so we're working on that, but know that it's, it's coming. Questions?
I am just so excited. I'm like Christmas morning. Can we get it done? Can we get it done? Like, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so before I turn it over to Lori, Lori's going to talk to you a little bit more about programming. And the reason that it's important for you to understand what we're going to program at the theater is as we design the theater, it's important for us to, to design the theater based on its use. We know we can't be everything to everyone. So she'll give you a little better idea as to what we're thinking. But we need to understand what we need as far as lighting, as far as sound, as far as preparation rooms, loading docks, et cetera, and, and plan the theater. Remember, the theater originally was a movie house. So there's some, there's some issues with the theater. And I suspect you're, you're fully aware of most of those. The loading dock, the back loading dock is very tight. And you're limited on what you can and can't bring into the, to the back area, which, which limits some of the things we do. The, the green room, the green room is an area that performers prepare and get ready to perform. That is small. In fact, we're going down, we're building a basement level to accommodate a little bit of a green room and restrooms and, and other accessible areas. The stage, the stage is, is limited in what we can do. But those are all, all things that we'll be able to navigate through and make work. The other thing that I hear a lot of, a lot of people say is, where in the heavens are you going to park? And, and that surprises me because I don't think parking's an issue. And let me tell you why. If you think about it, we own this building and we're going to be moving City Hall about the same time that the theater is going to come online. Well, certainly, when we sell this building or when we develop this building for whatever we develop it for, we can make sure that we have some parking that can be used for the businesses that end up to be here and then the, the theater. It's most likely that the theater is going to be used at times when whatever business is here is, is not going to be used. And I, I use it as, as an example, the post office. You may know that the post office rents Ken Price Ballpark parking from us. And that's where their employees park. Well, that works out great for them on the weekdays. And it's, it's just as closer, maybe further away than, than, than parking here and walking to the theater. And then on the Saturdays, if you come down on a Saturday, the employees park in this parking lot here because it's so much closer. But, but again, it's still the same distance to the theater. So parking is not an issue. If you've, if you've gone to other theaters in Salt Lake or the Egyptian Theater in Park City, you park a lot farther away than, than this parking lot. So I just don't think that if the mayor and the council are online with making sure that we have parking here, I don't think parking's an issue. So I will turn some time over to Lori to talk about programming unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Lori comes up, I'll just excuse Councilmember Rosalba Dominguez. I forgot that at the beginning, but she is excused.
And to, to your point with Pathways, Diane, they, they raised 39 million for the New Echols Theater uptown. So we have no worry that they, the ability they have. So we're excited.
They know what they're doing.
Right.
Good.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, yeah. I think, I think they'll pull through nicely for us. Again, as Kim said, I think we need to remember this was built as a movie theater way back in the 30s. And so we have to, as we bring it up to code and such, we have to remember that that's the best use for us, for it. I would like to do three musicals over there, spring, Christmas and fall. Then we do have some arts education pieces that we could use it for, that we should use it for. Then we get out of Hillcrush Junior High's way. Our storytelling theater and our Missoula, the children's theater there. And, and a couple of other things. I think we did shorts with, well, we did do shorts films with the theater teacher over at Murray High. And I would like to host that again. That was really fun for the kids. So art set is, is a, a thing that really needs to be in there. It's not a lot, a lot of time, but it just needs to happen. Then, a lot of, so just so you know, musicals need three weeks in a theater, which is what we do up at the amphitheater. So that's nine weeks out of the year. So we needed about 10, 12 weeks out of the year for city functions. The rest of that time, we can program it out. We could rent it out. We could bring small bands in. We can bring in, we, we were hoping that we could be part of the Park City Film Festival, that we could be a venue for that. So there are a lot of things that we can do to rent it out, but we have to be really careful when we're scheduling that we're not scheduling against ourselves. So while we have musical theater and, and bands and such up at the amphitheater, I think it will be best to have movies here, maybe Monday night, family night, date night on the weekend, something fun like that where the community can enjoy it. And, and we can have a few, a few concerts, I think. But we have to remember that the sound system for a movie theater is much different and not appropriate or, or what we need for a band like David Archileta or Alex Boyer. We'd still need to bring in a sound system and that's costly as well. But I think we should do that as well. So ticket prices will be tricky because I don't really know. I'm still trying to gather the information we have from the amphitheater on what people will pay and to keep it priced so that our residents here can enjoy. So that, that's a, that's a tricky thing.
Yes. Would you be able to, there's two rooms, as you look at the baby. Could they be used as recital rooms for piano teachers?
So the, the room on the south is going to be the ticket office.
Okay.
Okay. The room just north of that, we, I don't know because that would be really hard to put a piano in and out. And we don't have a piano anyway, so if anyone knows Summerhaze. But.
If we find a piano.
We, it could, we could still figure something out, I'm sure.
I'm just asking for, for those piano teachers and dance teachers that when they want to rent out a location, if they didn't do it last year, they won't find anything this year.
Right, right.
So could they have that option if they came to you or whoever?
I, I think absolutely. I, I think that's what we're going to be open for.
For danced people, kids?
Yeah, yeah, if, if, if we set our, our price, our prices to where we can afford that. I mean, when you, when you've got a place like that, you've got to have at the very least two people there at all times for safety. Plus, you have to have any concession people. So you have to kind of take all that into account on what you can afford to rent it out for and still not go in the hole, of course.
I know, we were in the middle of finding someplace for my daughter, for her piano students, and we had to have a million dollar policy on this building. And so it was like, well, where do we go? And so we are going out of Murray's boundaries to find a place for, to have piano recitals. So I'm just curious, will there be an option like for piano recitals, flute recitals?
I think there will be, but we still have to have some sort of insurance, a certificate of, of, of insurance for everybody that comes in and rents it. We'll need to have that. And I know usually it is a million dollars aggregate.
Yeah.
Sometimes up to 2 mil. But that will depend on where our legal department puts that as, as necessary.
All righty.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, oh, one more thing. We are going to go up and visit the Utah Theater, which is what we're going to mirror ours after. They do have three theaters up there. The one is, was built a few years before the Murray Theater. So they're really most likely how we're going to, to program. And they have some really fun things that we'll just sort of mirror and copy.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're very excited about the update and the progress. We really appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Lori. It's so exciting.
Next up, we've got discussion on a zone map amendment from A1 agriculture to R18 low-density single-family zoning district for the property located at 606 East Sunny Flower Lane.
I'm going to take this today. Can, can you all hear me? I can't hear myself, so I'll just say that you can. So, yeah, this is a request from Brad Reynolds Construction to, wait, what? Oh, are we doing Sunny Flowers? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I had these all backwards.
She's very excited.
I'm very excited, so never mind. I'll let Jared talk.
I didn't want, he was going so good, I didn't want to interrupt him. But I appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Zach. This is a request from Brandon, Brandon Stringham to amend that zoning map from A1 to R18 for just a portion of 606 East Sunny Flowers. So let me show you really quickly. That blue highlight that you see is the part of the property that we're talking about. This larger piece of property is zoned A1. And this smaller piece over here is zoned R18. The folks that own the smaller piece adjacent would like to purchase that portion. And we are fussy in planning zoning. We like properties to match whatever zones they're part of. So in order for this larger piece of property that really doesn't, they have trouble getting to it. It's across a, it's across a little body of water and it's up a slope. And it makes a great garden spot for this other home that would like to purchase it and isn't very usable for 606 East Sunny Flowers. The zoning, that's the portion you can kind of see better there, that little section. It's a little bit isolated and it makes some sense to, to allow that property exchange to happen, but we do need the zoning to match. It is supported by the general plan. You recall in that future land use map, it says this whole area is slated to be low-density residential. And the R18 is in that low-density category, just like that A1 is. So there's really no challenge in, in having the A1 stay A1 on the larger portion of that property and go to R18 for this back, this little 2,000-foot-plus area to be rezoned. The planning commission heard this on December 16th, sent a lot of property notices to property owners. We didn't have any, any issues with it. Had a couple of people call and once it was explained what was going on, they weren't concerned. The planning commission did vote six to zero to forward that recommendation to you. The findings that you see there basically just indicate that the general plan supports this kind of a change, that it doesn't cause any problems for the zoning ordinance or the zoning for either of the two properties involved and that the commission did vote to forward that recommendation. And staff is still supportive of the, of the change and as was the planning commission. Did you have any, any questions for staff at this point? Okay. Thank you.
Now, we'll jump to number three, right? Number three, and this one, we're looking at discussion of an ordinance, looking to amend the general plan from neighborhood commercial to residential multifamily, medium density, and amend the zoning map from commercial neighborhood to residential multifamily. Allendale, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, for the first time. First time seeing you this evening.
So nice to meet you.
Yeah, right? So this is a request from Brad Reynolds Construction, like you'd mentioned, for a general plan amendment and zone map amendment to the property at 662 West 5300 South and 5322 South Allendale Drive. As you can see on your screen in front of you, these were initially subdivided into two properties because this north property here was going to be developed into some senior living facilities. And they were going to try to sell this portion off, the southern portion off to be used as commercial. However, due to some, some financial issues, they were not able to obtain funding for. they were not able to obtain funding for, um, for the stellar senior living center. Uh, so they are looking at potentially selling this to Brad Reynolds can, uh, subject to that, to a zone change of, of the property. As you can see here, it's in the CN zone, which is the neighborhood commercial zone. It allows for, uh, light uses, uh, like senior living facilities, gas stations, uh, banks, I think are allowed in the zone. So one of the, uh, here, here you can see the subdivision, north is, uh, on your left. So, um, there's the one parcel that, that's being used or was proposed to remain commercial. And that's one of the, one of the issues with this is that UDOT, which owns 5300 South, um, will not allow an access on this, to this property. They have said, no, no way. You're, you're just not going to have access to it. So that, that's one of, one of the reasons that we're looking into, or why staff feels that this is an appropriate change for a use. The general plan calls this to be neighborhood commercial. So this would require that general plan change like we are requesting. The neighborhood commercial, you know, allows for, um, smaller neighborhood centers. Kind of talked about that largely. It's, it's called out for uses in the RNB zone, the CN and any, says a new updated commercial zone, but we don't have that. So. Medium-density residential, which they're proposing, would allow for the R16, the RM10 and the RM15. A, a, as you have seen in your packet, they are requesting an RM15 zone. That would allow for up to, um, up to 12 units per acre. As you can see in the zone comparison, um, CN residential is not allowed. In the RM15, if they were going to be doing a single-family, requires an 8,000 square foot minimum or up to 12 units per acre as a base density. Height in the zone allows up to 40 feet, um, with the approval of the planning commission. Front yard setback 25, rear yard 25. Parking required is two and a half spaces per unit. So that usually is like a garage unit and then some guest parking on that as well. We don't show individual projects themselves, but I wanted to kind of give you an idea. Brad Reynolds is very, um, you probably have heard numerous applications from Brad Reynolds Construction. He's very popular here in the city. He likes to work in our city. This is just an example of the type of architecture that he does in, in the city. It's very, um, it, it, it's very, I can't think of the word right now. Residential in nature, pitched roofs, um, traditional, we had traditional architecture. He doesn't really build the really tall, you know, three-story, um, units that, that are kind of the rage right now. So, um, he doesn't really do that. So Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on December 16th. Uh, we sent 154 notices to all properties within 500 feet of the subject property. Only one public comment was received. Um, he just expressed concern. Um, he's, he's been, uh, very vocal on this property. He wasn't opposed to what Brad Reynolds was doing. He just wants to make sure that what Brad Reynolds is doing is what Brad Reynolds proposes to do. So he, he just wants to make sure that that's moved forward. Uh, the planning commission voted six to zero to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. And then, um, these are the findings. Uh, the general plan, uh, allows for flexibility in its implementation. We, uh, we believe this would encourage additional buffering between, um, the single-family residential and some of the multifamily residential that's around there in that area. Those are a little bit higher usage, um, especially those apartments kind of north on Murray Boulevard. And then also Applegate condos as well. So, um, perfect. And then, yeah, so staff is recommending approval of both the general plan, well, planning commission and staff are recommending approval for both the general plan and the zone map. And I just felt like I just talked without breathing, so I apologize. I felt like I just flew through it. So, um, any questions I can answer at this point?
Yes.
Yeah.
I realize that at this point Brad Reynolds is going to be the developer or he's the applicant.
Correct.
Certainly. Uh, but since, you know, that's not what we're voting on or will be voting on. Our concern needs to be, uh, the changing of the, uh, general plan. And so as a result, it, it really, um, makes me want to make sure that this is the right, uh, zone for this area.
Sure.
And so, and that everything's been considered and not necessarily just that Brad Reynolds is going to be developed. Who, who, you know, we all think's wonderful, but if something happened, he were to sell it or, you know. So that's, that's my concern.
Definitely.
And just to make sure that we are realizing we're going to be amending the general plan and that we have done our due diligence in that regard.
Hundred percent. And I would, I would mention, um, you can't see it very well here, but, um, this, so this is the subject property, right? That, this, can you see my mouse on here? I don't know if you can. Up here in this little corner, you can see RM15 is where Applegate is located, um, just on the other side of this rehabilitation center. Above here in that apartment complex, it, it also has, um, residential, which I think is more around about the 25 units per acre. Uh, so we do feel like we've considered, considered the application thoroughly. We feel like this would be a good buffer between that single-family neighborhood. It'll actually help stabilize that a little bit. As you can see, this is, this is a very small section of single-family zoning. In the general plan, actually, you can see here, it's actually been slated to move to office zoning. So we think that this would actually help stabilize that single-family neighborhood and keep it, um, alive and potentially be reinvested in, in, in the, in the future as well.
Very good. And what is the most, um, that could be built on there in terms of units and?
That is a great question. I do not remember the size of this. Let me see if I can. Sorry, give me just one second. I'll figure that out.
Thank you.
Please. So, I'm sorry to butt in, but I'm gonna buy Zach a little time to find the acreage on that. While I, while we, while I just want to kind of double down on that point about the, the general plan. That does represent a significant change for us. When we initially did the general plan in 2017, we, we looked at these, at these, I think it's 27 lots, 27 homes in that area. We looked at those sandwiched between office development and we had a, a big office development, a million square feet coming of, of office, class A office space to the east, commercial and, and higher density residential to the west. And those, um, 27 homes looked kind of like they were headed for extinction. And you don't see investment in that kind of a, a little neighborhood, a leftover, uh, neighborhood. But this, this pivot, because of the inability of, of our inability to get an access off of this property onto 53rd South, to viably make it commercial, really kind of caused us to take a hard look at it and say, well, maybe this does make sense. And we can, in the process of adding some missing middle housing, actually stabilize some, some naturally occurring. It makes it sound like it's fungus or mushrooms or something, naturally occurring, uh, affordable housing. These, these are homes that have, that are kind of in a bracket that'll be easier to afford for some folks. Everything is expensive right now, obviously, but, um, and, and I, I mentioned to the planning commission when we talked about this. I, I live, this, this property just very much mirrors where I currently live, my, my current townhome. There are some leftovers, a little leftover neighborhood in Riverton, probably 40 homes, sandwiched between the park and the commercial uses on Redwood Road. And my townhomes are right there. And they've kind of, you, now you see people reinvesting in those homes and starting to use them again, starting to, to put money into them again. And we're kind of a little, we're lower density, well, we're not lower density at all, but we're, we're more residential in nature and, you know, we, we walk our dogs and know those folks that live on that street and it's worked out really, really well. And I see it stabilizing that neighborhood. So I see that here and I think we really have a case to be made there. So we've pivoted as staff to say, we don't want to see those homes go extinct and this might help us keep them around. So. And then, and that all taught, all that time of being able to find acreage.
Yep.
Alright, mission accomplished.
Good job.
Okay. So, uh, this is, this is the absolute max that they could build. Um, you, we'd have to take into consideration roads and things like that, um, i- if they decide to do any public roads. So, uh, cause that would be taken out of the equation. So without an actual project, I can't give you an exact number. But the max, just based on the, 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 the acreage is 65 total.
And the height is 40, 40 foot?
40 feet, yeah, to the very top.
And that's the highest they could-
Yep.
There it goes, 40 feet.
Yep. Yep.
Alright, good. Thank you. That gives me a good sense of that zoning.
For sure.
So I have a, I don't know, being new here. Is there going to be a set number that can be rented out? I could go in, buy a couple and rent them out. Is there going to be a set number that are going to be rented out?
Uh, I can't.
Because these are being owned, right?
Well, so typically Brad Reynolds sells his, his product type. He doesn't, uh, do rentals. That being said, if he decided that he wanted to, um, he could. We, we as a city cannot, um, tell a developer that they can or cannot rent their property. Uh, it's against federal housing law. We're not allowed to tell people if they can rent or not rent.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute, one more question.
Sure.
You know the Conoco Station on the corner?
I do.
Are they going to be using that property also? Or is that going to be still something else, whatever that is going to be?
Right now, it's just going to be something else. I know that they have been in talks with trying to get that property, but I don't think it's gone anywhere. So.
So if they do acquire that piece of property, then they would have to come back to the planning and zoning and redo everything?
Correct. At least that corner. So.
Yes, of course.
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to say I appreciate what you said about the buffering. I drive through this area a lot and it, it feels awkward. It feels a little disjointed right there. So I, I think that this is a really nice, um, proposal, regardless of whether the current developer goes for it or not, or it's someone else. I think, I think it makes sense, um, with coming out on Allendale and, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, I did want to caveat this too. It, it is Brad Reynolds' intention. So, um, he has stipulated in the application that for, if for some reason it doesn't go through, um, he's actually pulling out of, of, of purchasing the property. So it's not like, so he is very committed to, to this project. So, um, I just wanted that to be noted as well.
For the traffic issue, you know where Allendale is? They, you can't make left, right, whatever, go crosshead, east. Is there going to be some kind of light or, or for those residents that live there that need to get on the freeway or?
Most likely not a light. Uh, UDOT has very strict, um, lighting standards. It, it has to be like a mile between lights for them.
Okay.
However, that, that doesn't preclude us to only allowing right in, right out there. Uh, that might be addressed during a, a project review, uh, with engineering and maybe something on Allendale. I'm not a hundred percent sure without an actual project.
And that spits out onto Murray Boulevard, right?
Correct. Yep, yep.
Which I use all the time when I, you know, am not paying attention and like thinking and driving. It flips you around and then you've got a good light coming that way or that way.
Exactly. Yep.
Get lost there a lot. Any other questions? Thank you guys. That was great.
Appreciate it.
Alright, next up, we are going to talk about our city council appointments because we have some boards and committees that we need to fill. So there's a few of these. There's the, uh, Association of Municipal Councils. There's the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Committee. There's ULCT, which is the Utah League of Cities and Towns, which is the Policy Committee. And then there's the Murray Chamber. In, uh, moving forward tonight, we will have to take a vote at the council meeting later. And we also are cognizant that we have a missing fifth council member who we have yet to meet. They're out there and we are so excited to meet them. We just don't know where they are yet. So our intention this evening is to, uh, fill the ones that we need to in order to continue the business that needs to be done on these boards and committees. But in that, uh, we do want the public to know that whoever, uh, does end up representing, um, the fifth district, um, once we know what all of their amazing skills and passions and interests are, that we will reevaluate. They may be a great fit, um, in an empty seat. They may, um, we may move some people around, but that we're all going to be very flexible to that. But we want to make sure we can do the business that we need to do, um, in the meantime. So on that, my understanding so far, and I'm going to read off what I've got and then you all let me know how off-base that we may be. Alright, for the Association of Municipal Councils, I have Diane Turner for that one. Does that sound good to you?
Yes, I'd be happy. That's one I've not served on, so I think it would, um, be, be interesting. So, yeah.
Fantastic. Then we have, uh, the CIP, the Capital Improvement, um, Committee for that. Pam, would you like to sit on that? It's, um, nearing with your work on the budget since it looks at spending there. Is that something you'd be interested in? I also have you there. I'm not trying to pull the rug out from under you. It's a bonus.
I think it's a really good idea if you're, if you're on the budget to also be on the CIP. I think it's, it would be really helpful for you.
That one does not meet monthly or weekly or anything like that. That quarterly, does that sound? I look at, I've never been to one of those. I don't know. Does that sound about right?
What did you say Brenda?
Annually.
Annually, annually.
Okay.
And then, um, after speaking to Diane and Rosalba, we'll leave the other one there empty for our potential fifth person. And if that doesn't seem like a good fit, we can move around and pop someone else in there with you. It is like chess. I want everyone's dreams to come true tonight. So I'm trying to make sure we've got this.
Kat, I have an idea. Why don't you just appoint that person without knowing who they are? I'm just kidding.
Lucky person gets that seat.
You stick over there, mister. Alright, and then for Utah League of Cities and Towns, Rosalba Dominguez has expressed interest in that. And so we need to get her cracking on that with the session starting today. Big day, big day. And then for the Murray Chamber, Pam Carter has been, um, has expressed interest. And so that is who I have for that one. How, how does that sound to everyone?
I think it's good.
Alright, so that is what we will, um, propose at the council meeting. We will vote on it.
But you're not on anything.
I know. I don't do anything around here. It's really embarrassing, honestly.
No, I'm saying you can, you know.
It's alright.
Cause I know.
It's alright. Okay.
She's chair and that's, that's a-
Amazing. Alright, next up, we have reports. So we're going to hear from city representatives to the inter-local boards and commissions. And we have five minutes set for each. We are, uh, running a little bit ahead. So if you have a couple extra fun facts to share with us, uh, we'd love to hear it. But we'll start with Diane and Pam Roberts.
So actually Kat, if we could move, Pam's on her way right now.
That's right. We did talk about that.
She's right there.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Pam, I'm so sorry. Oh my gosh.
Yes.
I've never heard a greater sigh of relief from Diane when Pam walk in.
Anyway, I serve on-
Good. You know, these are awkward anyway.
I serve on the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District. And, uh, Pam Roberts is our executive director. And I'm very honored to, uh, serve on, on, on Wolford is what we call it. And a big reason is because of Pam. She's an, you are an amazing director and we so appreciate you. And so I thought it would be good and you're always so willing to come and, uh, let us know what's going on with Wolford and especially when we have a new council member to, uh, just do a short overview and just let us know what's going on. And we're doing great, by the way. But anyway, thank you Pam. Thanks for being here.
Always a pleasure to be here. Am I live? Okay. So I will do my best to navigate this little report that I put together. And I appreciate the opportunity that council member Turner has given me to come and visit with you all. It's good to see you all. Um, uh-oh, okay, there we go. I panicked for just a second. So my report, I'll just go through, um, briefly. But our mission is basically to provide a sustainable, quality, integrated waste and recycling collection services for the health and safety of our community. And we had, added the tagline back in 2009 that, because not everything fits in the can. So we have a wide variety of services that we provide. So let me just start off with the district and I think everybody can see that, I hope. So these are the district boundaries and this includes all of the municipalities that we service and the unincorporated Salt Lake County. And then you can see off to the right of that map, there's the town of Brighton.
And then you can see off to the right of that map, there's the town of Brighton, Big Cotwood Canyon. So we have 13 cities, town in the district and the unincorporated county. And each municipality and the county have representation on our board and it's totally governed by our board. And what this map also illustrates is not just where we service, but where we deliver the waste and recycling. So those black labels are the, what we call dumping facilities for, I wish I had a fancier name, processing centers? How about that? Processing centers. Because the landfill does process waste. So that's where we take, the majority of our waste garbage goes to the Salt Lake Valley facilities. We also deliver garbage out to Transjordan. But understanding that none of the cities in the district or the district itself is not a member city of Transjordan. We're a customer, we pay. I know that the portion of Murray that we don't service, you are a member there and you have a reduced fee per ton. We pay $33 a ton and I think the city pays half that. So you can see the portion of Murray. It's, the boundary is basically what used to be the unincorporated county that sits between Holiday and Cotwood Heights. So it's just east of 900 East and follows Van Winkle up to Highland and ends about 215 where Cotwood Heights border starts. So that's the portion we service. There's about 2,800 homes that are in the district. And I know that the city has, you know, talked to the residents about withdrawing from the district. And that's happened twice. I think the first time was before I started. I think it was 2005. And at the time, the residents said, we don't want to leave. So Mayor Snar at that time withdrew the proposition or the thought of doing that. And then it happened again in 2015 after we separated from Salt Lake County. We used to be a division under Salt Lake County. And we separated in 2013, January 1, became our own organization with the board having ultimate authority to govern the district. So in 2015, the, the city administration put it out there again. Let's find out what the residents want. And I think we had just raised fees at that time. And so the thought was maybe residents would want to withdraw. And again, the residents showed up and it was close to 90% of the residents that came to the meeting voted to stay. So again, the residents chose to stay. And there was reasons for that was weekly recycling and then the annual cleanup that we provide. And now Murray has implemented the dumpster program. So the dumpsters can be reserved and you put those in the residents' property, similar to what we have been doing. All right, jumping down to, unless there's any questions on that one, I'll keep rolling. So this is an overview of the services that we provide. As I mentioned, there's a variety of services. We call it the Integrated Collection System. So we have the weekly garbage, of course, because we're mandated to provide that to all the residents in the district. We are mandated to provide each home a can. And then we have the ability to assess a fee. We don't levy any taxes. We're an enterprise fund under state statute and follow all the rules that go along with that. And we also provide weekly recycling collections. Currently, we charge our residents $17 a month for these services that you see. The only thing that's an additional fee would be the trailer rental program. So besides the container reservation that each resident can, you know, sign up on a first come, first served basis, that's part of that monthly fee, there's an additional service called a trailer rental. So that would be an additional fee. For green waste, it's $45 per trailer. And for bulk waste, it's 175. And that goes on their, their property for a few days, once they reserve it. The other services that are additional fees would be, we provide a subscription green waste, curbside green waste program that our residents enjoy. We're almost up to 10,000 subscribers with that. And that rolled out in 2014. The other one is curbside glass. We collect and we contract that out actually with Momentum Glass because they're the experts in the valley that can provide that service. They use their trucks and we just provide the can. There is a startup fee associated with both of those programs. And you can see the curbside Christmas tree is actually going on right now. And then central glass site collections. Any questions on those? I know I'm going kind of quick, but, okay, I'll just skip on down. And this goes through the legalities and the statutes that we do need to follow. We're a special service district and I'm going to highlight that for a moment because last year, those of you that were here, I came and talked to you all about becoming a local district. And in order to do that, it's called a reorganization. It is allowed under state statute. So what does that mean? Special Service District, we have some limitations for that the board has. For example, if we ever wanted to levy a tax, which we would not, to be honest with you. I think being an enterprise fund makes us a little more nimble. Taxes come in at a certain time of year. And our fees are assessed on a quarterly basis. And so we receive revenue quarterly, which is, helps us to keep things rolling, literally, and the garbage being picked up, rather than wait till the end of the year for a tax. The other thing is that the board would be able to decide if we want to bond for anything, if we needed to ever, you know, get a loan to, for our trucks, which we don't do that right now, we pay cash. We're a cash basis, we're debt free and very thankful for that, very thankful. And then if ever an area wanted to withdraw from the district, we, the board would have authority over that. Whereas now, those three things, we have to go back to the county council and ask for permission to do that. So it's just the thought of becoming totally independent from Salt Lake County. And any questions on that one? No, okay. All right, am I doing TMI? I usually do TMI.
It's great, we're just soaking it in, but it's, it's great.
Okay. And then, you know, later on, when you can't sleep, you can read the report and then you'll, you'll be good. So one of the things I wanted to highlight, because you may hear about the, the annual cleanup that we do, and that's the containers again. We used to put those, some of you may know, we used to put those in the street. And what we experienced is a lot of piles in many landfills. Well, when we had labor that was easily to hi, easy to hire, we could get CDL drivers, drivers that WIM and staff to help pick up that stuff. It was a headache, but we could manage it. But in 2019, we started really seeing staff shortages, a hard time hiring CDLs. And so those piles became harder and harder for us to manage. So honestly, we really wanted to make a change. I will be honest and tell you that COVID gave us an ability to make a change, a much needed change. And what I mean by that is we did not want our staff to physically handle waste. The National Waste and Recycling Association was urging collectors and haulers of waste not to physically touch any of the waste. So that was kind of the catalyst to move away from that. And so that's when we came up with the reservation system, which is not perfect. I don't know if anybody's a resident or customer, I apologize. The online reservation is not perfect. We're trying our best to get a different website provider and think we have that vendor that will start this, this year and get us a better website and better scheduling opportunities and abilities for our residents. But we, because we changed that, we again went in 2021 with the fact that we can't hire enough drivers and staff to go back to having those containers on the street. We're continuing with that reservation program. So coming into 2020, I asked our staff if they would be so kind to come up with a catchy new name to formalize the fact that the old thing ain't there anymore. So what they came up with is SCRAP. Now, there's no A in there, I realize. But it's Seasonal Container Reservation Program. But they took the acronym SCRAP and then they backed into the name. So anyway, it's just something that our staff had fun with. So SCARP, scrap, it is what it is. Same process though. We mail out the postcards. We have the reservation available, the calendar online. Residents can go in there again. It's first come, first served. We can't provide, we have, we have 86,000 homes in the district. There's no way in the world we could provide that in the six-month timeframe that we have. So it is first come, first served. And we hope those that need it, get it. I can say that we've gotten early results from our customer satisfaction survey. And we'll get more in depth in February, in the February meeting. But just first blush tells us that 94% satisfaction overall from our customers, which is very, I'm thankful because I have such a great team, that's why. And then the other part of that is the, this program received in the 80 percentile. I don't know exactly that amount. I, I'm going from memory. I just met with the survey company that did that for us just before here and I, it left my mind, so apologize. But we'll get those results out to you. What else? We have our goals. I mentioned we want to reorganize. I won't get into a lot of this, but just to highlight the fact that we strive for world-class customer service. And what that means is a personal touch. We return phone calls. We're kind, we're courteous, even if we're having a bad day. We want to achieve high employee satisfaction. And I can, I want to thank Diane and our board for the fact that you've been so supportive in increasing those salaries that, you know, those salary markets have gone up.
I know.
I know you've seen that with police and every other.
And it really helped, didn't it?
It really did.
When we did that, I think, yeah, it was important.
Yes, and I thank you.
You were losing too much staff and that costs so much.
Yeah.
Yep, at the end, so, yeah. I'm glad we were able to do it.
Thank you very much for doing it. So first blush of that, we have an 89% employee satisfaction rating, which I'm thankful, again, I, you just don't, I know. I'm thankful, that's, that's what I will say. And then, you know, environmental stewardship. We have a full CNG fleet with our side load trucks that are going through neighborhoods and our front loads that pick up the front load containers at the city halls. And the town of Brighton, we use total containers and a compactor up there. And then financial stewardship, of course. Making sure we're watching those dollars and cents and being responsible for the public funds. Excuse me. Well, I went through that really quick. Any questions for me? I hope you all have something.
I, I'm just so impressed with those numbers for customer and employee satisfaction. That's huge. You should feel really good about that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just jealous, I don't get glass pickup, so I'm just jealous. That's awesome. But thank you for sharing those, all really great information. Diane, did you want to share anything else?
No, just that with Pam's leadership, it's just, you know, it's, that's why we've done what we've done. And I really appreciate being a part of the board. And I'm hoping that the mayor will reappoint me for next year.
I didn't realize that you haven't, yes, please.
On the record, you and I had talked and I, I said yes, so.
Got it on the record now. I mean, I love you all, I just.
Yes, thank you so much for being here, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Pam, I just want to say thank you from the mayor's office. We, I've known Pam for a while and just, you're awesome, you're fun to work with, you're happy, you really make this enjoyable for us. So we love and appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, congratulations.
Thanks Pam. All right, next up, we were, we're going to skip the Association of Municipal Councils update since Councilmember Dominguez is not with us tonight. So we'll jump ahead to the ULCT Legislative Policy Committee, which is me. And so on that, two sort of save the date reminders before we jump into bills and policy. And that's that the mid-year conference in St. George is April 20th to the 22nd. And then tomorrow is our lunch with legislators and some of the youth in the community, which is always really awesome. So that is tomorrow. So as far as policy goes, today was the first day of the session, which is super exciting. I'm pulling up on my tablet here, I've got the ULCT bill tracker. If you're interested, it's a great thing to check out. So to start out there, I chose to focus on the ones they have marked hot. It's very spicy. So they only have a few of those so far. And those are the ones that they are actively engaged in or concerned about. Or super excited about, could be either way. So the first one is HB 151. This is the Retail Facility Incentives. This is the bill that would prohibit public entities from making payments to a real. I can't say that word now. Developer, thank you. Like, I just lost the ability to talk there, thanks team. So that's one that the league is watching closely. The next one is, and please jump in if you have more to add. There's the experts over here. HB 182 is the Local Health Department Order Amendments, which would specifically prohibit a chief executive officer of a municipality from exercising emergency powers during a pandemic, endemic, or public health emergency. So they're watching that one closely. Don't want you to do anything, they're worried about you. Then there's Senate Bill 110, which is water as part of the general plan. Requires water use and preservation to be a part of city and county general plan. So those are the only ones they've marked hot so far that they're really, really leaning into. There are several other bills coming up having to do with water, drinking water, water testing, lead testing in schools and child cares. There's a bill HB 85, which would remove parks as an approved public use for which eminent domain can be used, which I thought was interesting. We don't do that a lot, but if we're going to get you some parks, Lori, we got to do it fast. Kim and Lori, we're an eminent domain, all the things. We're not really, this public meeting, not eminent domaining anything, I apologize. HB 123 sets a timeline for investigations having to do with officer use of force. So that would change some requirements for how quickly investigations needed to happen and also public posting of that information. And then the last one is the Joint Resolution Sponsored by McKay. And that is one that would immediately end the Salt Lake County Public Health Orders requiring masks, which they were fast-tracking today past all the committees. So I'm not sure where that landed as of the end of the day, but they did have it on the floor by about 3:30, they circled it. So I'm not sure, since I've been in meetings since then, what's happened. But any other bills or things that you'd like to jump in on? No, okay. It's early, anything could happen. But for council members and the public, know that you can reach out to your representatives and email, call, or text them. And they, they really do respond from one-on-one interaction. So it's a good thing to, to interact with. And again, the ULCT bill tracker is an amazing tool because there are already, when I did this, too early, I did this about 36 hours ago, which means so much of it is, you know, changed already. But at that time, there were almost 350 bills logged for the session that had a number. So the tracker is really great because that helps you kind of see what is going to impact Murray specifically. Any questions, comments? No, all right. Then we will jump to the fabulous Kim Fong and talk about the Murray City Library. Hi, Kim.
I'm assuming this is where I sit for this. Okay. Just have a couple of things that I wanted to let you know about. One of them is that we have changed our library hours and we are now opening at 9:00 a.m. instead of 10:00 a.m. We're finding that this is a very popular time for people to come into the library. I think it's very convenient for many people to be able to, like drop their kids off from school and then just come to the library. We have several senior citizens that like to come at that time of day and use the computers. And so it, we've only been doing this since the beginning of the month, but it's already a popular time. I think we had about 15 people that came to the door at 9 o'clock this morning to get in. So that's, that's, that's really good. We are finding, however, overall, that we do not have as many people walking into the library right now. We've seen a pretty sharp decrease overall in the last week, of course, with the Omicron and people being cautious. But we do have a lot of people that are using our whole pickup service. And so I just wanted to talk a minute about that as well. Last year, we were able to use some CARES money that the city very generously gave to us to put in a drive-through window into, into the library. And so now people can use whole pickup service very easily by, they give us a call on, on the. They give us a call on the number that's posted. We pull their stuff for them, and then we can just give it to them right through the window. And that's become a very popular service, and we are seeing a surge in that use again this weekend, again, because people are hesitant to come inside the library, but they still want their stuff. So that's been... I'm really glad that we put that in, and it makes it easy, especially... We were concerned... We had a system, and we still use that system sometime. There are some people that don't even want the contact through the window. But so we have bins outside the back door of the library, and we can't... And before, we would just put them in the bins for people. However, for people with mobility issues, that was really difficult. And so now with the window, even those with mobility issues can easily get their library materials. And even those that don't have mobility issues like it. So it's the majority of people that are using our whole pickup service use the window. And so we're very grateful that we had the opportunity to put that in and that it is being well-used. And that's really all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions about things that are going on.
I'm wondering, do you still have masks available?
We don't. We ran out really quickly on those.
Really?
And I contacted the health department, and they did not really give me any indication that we were going to get any more of those. So we started out with over 700 of them, and we were out by Wednesday.
Wow.
So we had a lot of people come in and get them. And we gave everybody that asked two masks, so they went pretty fast.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks for being so flexible and adapting. I mean, you're just amazing.
Yes, that's the name of the game right now, isn't it? Being flexible.
Yeah. Yeah, you've done a great job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we get to do the Jordan River Commission with Kim.
It's been a while. Thanks, Council, Mayor. So the Jordan River Commission, you may remember, I guess it'd be about six months ago when I presented, we were in the middle of a online evaluation to update the blueprint, Jordan River. And I think some of you took the opportunity to go online and answer the questions in preparation for the update. And the draft is now completed and online. I encourage you to go take a look at that draft. And if you have comments, send them my way, and I will relay them to the Jordan River Commission. As I looked at the draft, there was one thing that I wanted to share with the council, and that was, you may remember if you did the online survey, there was a question that directed you to answer your top priority for the Jordan River. So it limited you to one top priority. And I thought the results of that were interesting and of use, I think, to Murray City. So I'll go over the top seven, if that's okay. Number one was water quality for the Jordan River, which was 24% of the respondents. Number two was maintenance and cleaning, cleanliness of the Jordan River Parkway. And that was 16%. So 40% were for those of top two. Number three was safety, which probably doesn't come as a surprise, transient activity safety for the users. And that was 14%. So the top three got 54% of the respondents. And then the others trickled down to 13% to 7%. But number four was restore and maintain natural areas. And a lot of these, the people that got online and responded, it was interesting, the number of comments that said, follow Murray's example. When they talked about restoring natural areas and maintenance and cleaning and even safety, a lot of respondents said, follow Murray's example and do what Murray's doing. So I applaud you in your support of the Jordan River Parkway. Number five was travel to and through the Parkway for commuters and bikers. Number six, recreation opportunities. Felt like we needed more recreation opportunities. And the last one that I'll mention is number seven, which was more education and signage. And to go along with that, the Jordan River Commission is putting together a grant request to the state of Utah for monies for education and signage. And if that grant is successful, Murray will receive a little over $10,000 to replace five signs, mainly between 4800 South and Bullion, and there are signs that talk about the history of the area. So we're hoping that that gets supported. The other thing that the commission's doing now is they are... They do have members at the legislature supporting more money coming to the commission for projects. And then more importantly maybe is money for additional police patrol. You might remember that Murray City received additional monies from the Jordan River Commission and for additional police patrol in the Parkway last year. And last thing, Pam, maybe for your benefit, the Jordan River Commission is a commission that is made up of members from all of the cities along the Jordan River, of the three counties, and then some ex-officio members as well. And it really guides the Jordan River activity, development, and use, although it doesn't have any regulatory authority. So it's important that the commission follows everybody's wishes for the Jordan River. And I think they do. They do a good job of doing that and bringing the cities together and following the same guidelines and following what works as far as signages and regulations along the river and development as well. So any questions?
Are you the only one that represents Murray? Or is there others that...
So actually, the mayor is the representative for Murray, and then I'm the alternate. But it's just us two, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Kim.
Next up is Central Valley Water Reclamation, and that's Dani. Hello.
Hi. Well, thanks for inviting me. I was making notes, and I wrote the notes so small that I'm going to have to use my So as you know, Central Valley is made up of seven entities that own that facility. And then they are charged to manage the facility. So the seven entities that own that, it's Murray City and Salt Lake City, are the only two cities. The rest of them are improvement districts. The improvement districts would include Cottonwood Improvement District, and that goes all the way... Cottonwood serves all the way up into big and little Cottonwood. So they take in a large section and much of Sandy as well, of the upper part of Sandy. And then also, Cottonwood also serves a few portions of Murray City as well, as their lines come down through areas here that we can't serve. And then Mount Olympus, which goes, serves all the way up to Mill Creek. And then takes a portion of Salt Lake City as well that Salt Lake City can't serve because of the freeway goes right down the middle of them. So additionally, there's Tatersville Benyon Improvement District, which basically covers all of Tatersville City as well as parts of West Valley. Then Granger Hunter Improvement District, which takes the largest portion of West Valley. And then also Kerns Improvement District. So it's right down through the center of the valley, all the way to the mountains. We are the largest treatment plant in the valley. And as so, we serve... Our population, service population is close to 800, 800,000 people. So it's a pretty big deal. We... They discharge about 50, close to 50 million gallons a day out of the treatment plant. And that goes into... They actually discharge into Mill Creek, which then obviously goes directly to the Jordan River. So recently, we've been dealing with our flow measurements with the treatment plant and discovered there was a lot of inconsistencies with the flow measurements. And so the plant, the management of the plant hired a consulting firm. They came and did on-spot measurements as well as met with the Central Valley staff to do the fixed measurement devices that are out in the field. Their conclusion was is that they needed to make some corrections. And so over the last 11, 12 months, they've been making those corrections or fixing those. And so as it turns out, Murray's flows actually went down. Well, that's good news to us in one way, and it represents, number one, a lower cost to us, but it also could represent a lower flow infiltration coming into our system, meaning that we're not getting as much groundwater coming into our system. And that would be good news to us because we've done a lot of work in lining pipes and replacing lines. And so that represents part of that as well. So we'll see this year, when we get a little more of a wet year, what that does to us. But right now, because of that, our flows are actually down, which means our costs are a little bit down as well, the percentage. The other facilities or the other entities, their costs have gone up because their growth is a little faster than ours. Some of them much, much faster. So the construction... So the plant is about seven years ago entered into a consent agreement with the state of Utah regarding our discharge limitations to the Jordan River or to Mill Creek. At that point, they gave us requirements that were pretty stringent and unheard of in the western part of the United States, specifically here in Utah as well. And we argued with them and lost the battle. But so we entered into a consent agreement to change and do changes to the plant to meet these new requirements. That construction project began about five years ago, and we're fully ramped up. And we have a... Our consent agreement says that we have to have fully, be fully operational with this new processes in 2025. And of course, five years ago, COVID wasn't even a blip on the radar or any supply chain issues or anything else. And so some of the unexpected things are going to be shocking. So I'm just going to just tell you like it is. The estimated cost of the plant construction was about $250 million. And at the time, Murray City's cost or percent of that was about 9%. Of course, our percent has gone down a little bit. So now we're down to closer to 8%, a little lower than eight, actually 7.9%. With that said, the escalation of the costs in the past year and a half have pushed those costs to around $370 million. Now, what does that mean to Murray as far as dollars? We have to find an extra 18 and a half, $19 million. Our current rate structure can't handle it. So we're going to be visiting with the council here in the next little while and talking about these rates. So just to let you know ahead of time. But the construction is moving forward. It looks like a disaster zone over there, but some of the projects are being completed, which is really nice. The Headworks Building is where the water comes in first, and it comes to some what they call bar screens and all the rags and different things get pulled off those bar screens to bring, you know, the big things into the plant that come in. It's amazing what comes into the plant through big lines. But somehow, they seem to get put into the sewer. I have no idea how, why, but it does. So we have to manage that. One of the things in the Headworks Building has always been, the people who had to work in there used to have to put SCBAs or self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, kind of like the firefighters use when they go into a burning building. They used to have to dawn those and go into that building because the air was so unsafe to breathe. And for safety reasons that, you know, they've made... That's one of the changes that they've made to the plant, as well as doing upgrades in structural integrity so that we can withstand current standard... We're reading current standards for earthquakes and different things. Thankfully, this last earthquake didn't do anything to the plant. The structure managed to handle everything. But that obviously isn't the biggest thing that's ever going to hit the valley as we know, but who knows? But they're strengthening those. So anyway, so now they can go into this Headworks Building without any breathing. And they have an air monitor in there that will alarm if it gets... But it's not even close. It's great. They've got an air handling system that pulls all the air from different places in the plant to one location, strips the air and puts the bad stuff through a treatment process for the air. And so the rooms are getting good outside air all the time. So it's a good... There are good things that are happening, but they're very expensive things. So going forward, lots of changes are happening to the... Next time, maybe I can all bring you a drone video that shows you the construction and what it looks like. It's hard to tell what building is which or what process is which right now. But when it gets to the point where you can actually make sense of what pieces are which, I'll share that with you. And so the next time we get together, there'll be more information I can share. But any questions?
Yeah, lots of questions, but probably we'll deal with that another time.
Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, you really piqued my interest.
Okay. All right, good.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate the update. Jennifer, are there any announcements?
No, there are not.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned. See you back at 6:30.